Good morning. Nice to see you all. Happy Friday. Want to just put in this chat, good morning, everyone. Happy Friday. Love, love the interaction in the chat. As you know, we take our questions in the chat. Laura will go over kind of the, the ground rules a little bit later, but feel, please feel free to put any comments in there throughout our, our meeting today. We love to hear from you. So I am going to go ahead and get started. I am Gracie Semeninger. I am the president of Downtown Council. Thank you so much for being here this morning. I want to remind everyone that we are recording this session today with our guest speakers Mari Kurayishi and Mark Walker of the Jesse Baldi-Pont Fund. I'm excited to have them here because there's a lot of people that are familiar with the Jesse Baldi-Pont Center, also known as the Jesse, which is also known as the old Hayden Burns Library downtown. But a lot of people aren't as familiar with the scope of their reach here in Jacksonville and beyond. So we've asked them to come in and, you know, as Laura works on programs for this specific council, we talk a lot about some projects and Jesse Baldi-Pont Fund is really on the ground floor of a lot of these projects to make them possible. So I want to remind everyone too, that because we're recording, this recording will be available for our new Downtown Council podcast. If you haven't already searched the Downtown Council on your podcast provider, please do so and hit subscribe. For those of you that are new to Downtown Council or would like a little refresher, I'm going to give a brief overview. We are one of eight chamber councils and simply put Downtown Council cares about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's business community, including major corporations, growing businesses and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper. Our meetings offer a brave space to discuss local topics and we look forward to different perspectives on what makes our city great and ways to make it better. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top tier speakers to our meetings. And clearly today is no different. For those of you that are new to us, we meet on the first and third Friday of every month. Prior to COVID, these were in person and now we're planning to host the third meeting of each month in person with a virtual component coming later this summer. So just know that the first meeting of the month will remain on Zoom. The second one will be in person as well as the opportunity for people to still zoom in if you're not able to join us or, or aren't ready to come back just yet. I am a volunteer as well as the entire Downtown Council Board, so I want to just take this opportunity to recognize all Downtown Council Board members. So will you, if you're a Downtown Council Board member, will you please wave to our attendees this morning and say hello? Good morning. Wonderful. So because we're all volunteers, we love your feedback. We want to know what, what topics you'd like to hear, what speakers you'd like to hear, where, you know, where we could plug in and have the most, you know, have the most impact on downtown and greater Jacksonville. So please let us know if there's anything that you would like to see. At this point, I'm now going to turn it over to our programs officer, Laura Edgcombe, to introduce today's presenters. Laura?
Good morning, everybody, and happy Friday. I just want to start with my, I'm sorry, I have a little bit of a head cold, so I apologize that my voice is a little rusty this morning, but I will do my best to speak more clearly and make sure that everyone can hear me. Happy Friday. For those of you that I have not yet met, I'm Laura Phillips Edgcombe. I am the programs director for the Downtown Council and I'm also the director of catering events and community for the Red and Board and Estrella Cuisinea. So happy to see everyone this morning. Looking forward to today. Like Gracie had mentioned, you know, when we talk about what's relevant for downtown, what's relevant for Jacksonville, there's a lot of policymakers and there's a lot of people who are, you know, moving and shaking, let's say, right? There's lots of hot topics and it was, it's really important for us to incorporate and bring those that are actually boots on the ground doing into council because without it, I think that sometimes it kind of gets lost. And so when we were coming up, we had a whole list of people. There's, and there's tons of people that we want to bring in. But right now, given the relevancy of so much of that's happening with the Jesse, you know, it really was really, really important that we bring them in in this pivotal time for both them and for us so that we can figure out how we can, we as a council and a membership can help the Jesse, right? And I won't lie. So Mark was on a tour last week coming by the space and I was like, oh my God, I need you next week. Please, 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 please. So Mark and Mari, thank you so much for coming this morning on short notice. I really appreciate it. It was kind of one of those things as there's so much change going on downtown that, you know, I appreciate the, yes, we can definitely come and we also see this as an advantage for us. So I appreciate it. So I'm real quickly, everyone, going to give a little bit of information about both Mari and Mark in case you don't know who they are. And this morning you're going to meet them and you're going to love them just as we all do. So I'm really looking forward to that. We're going to start with Mari. Mari is the president of the Jesse Baldi-Pont Fund and she is the one that's leading the efforts to create the communities of belonging for the places and the institution that the Jesse knew and that, that Jesse Baldi-Pont knew and loved by fostering inclusive growth and reducing structural and systemic barriers to resources and opportunities. I love that. I could read that line over and over and over and over again. It's such a great line. Prior to joining the fund, Mari co-founded the groundbreaking crowdfunding philanthropic site Global Giving and served as president until 2018. So she definitely has an area of expertise that, you know, not a lot of people have. She's come in from, from the ground up and that's, that's huge. And if anyone knows anything about a crowdfunding organization, it is definitely not for the lighthearted. So that is a huge accomplishment. In 2011, she was named one of the foreign policies top 100 global thinkers for crowdsourcing world saving. And prior to that, she worked at the World Bank where she created and managed some of the bank's most innovative loans and programs, including founding its innovative engine, the development marketplace. She currently serves on the boards for Global Giving, DataKind and the Comer Museum. Yay, we just have the cover. We love the cover. As well as the advisory boards with the Davis Center for Russian and Eurasian Studies at Harvard, the US Japan Council and List, just Jacksonville. I don't know, to me, this is really amazing, but Mari speaks Japanese, but she also speaks Russian, Italian and French and English, clearly. I think it's really, it, it shows a lot to have such cultural diversity, especially in a program such as like what the Jesse's running. So Mari, I fangirl over you. You have no idea. So does Gracie, just so you know. And then let's talk about Mark. So I have the privilege of knowing Mark in real life, not just through his works. And he is definitely one that's boots on the ground. So Mark, I clearly fangirl over you as well. But for those of you who don't mark, know Mark, he serves as the director of the Jesse and he oversees the administrative and operations of the center itself, which is owned and operated by the Jesse Baldi-Pont Fund. The Jesse is, for those of you, it's the old Hayden Burns Library. It is, it's an iconic structural piece in downtown Jacksonville and definitely a spot that if you haven't been there in a while, you need to trek downtown because there's a lot of amazing, amazing art and cultural diversity that's kind of all around that area. Like it's, it's a huge spot and I'll let them talk about it. I don't want to take away from them. Mark is in charge of strategic planning, tenant acquisition, retention and relationship management, as well as the events, which they held an Art Republic event there recently and it went amazingly. He is, he's the senior program director for the 40 grantees located in the Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. He's also the senior program director for the 40 grantees located in the Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula of Virginia, Jesse Baldi-Pont's home region, as well as for the fund's energy conservation grants to liberal arts higher education institutions. Prior to being with, with the Jesse, he served as knowledge management and technology officer for the fund, implementing hardware and software business solutions. So he's definitely been a part of the Jesse to know it very intimately inside and out. And before that, he came from the Community Foundation in Jacksonville. He was their director of research and technology and the manager of research and technology for the Shoreton Foundation. So also Mark has a lot of really amazing philanthropic like history within himself and his, and all that he does. So clearly his heart's in it, which is great for us in Jacksonville. He volunteers his time assisting local nonprofits as part of the nonprofit center of Northeast Florida's Community Coaches Program. And he's currently a board member of the Technology Affinity Group or Foundations, a nonprofit membership organization that promotes the power of technology to advance the goals of philanthropic sector. All right, you guys, I'm so excited to have both you, Mark and Mari. As you guys know, I love, love, love a council meeting whenever we have multiple speakers because they feed off each other and they give us so much insight. And I know that this morning Mari and Mark both have a lot to tell and a lot to share and we're really looking forward to it. Just so you guys, for those of you who haven't been on council in a while, if you have questions, throw them in the chat box on the right side of your screen. Once Mari and Mark are through their, their presentation, we will all field some questions and get as many answers as we can. I feel like this is one of those mornings where we might run out of time. So you guys know, we have a hard stop at nine before we go into breakouts. So if we don't get everyone's questions, Mark and Mari, I'll send them to you and we can get them answered and back out. With that, good morning, Mark and Mari.
Good morning. Thank you for that very lovely introduction, Laura and Gracie. Really happy to be talking to you and thank you for showing up. It's early. I am going to share screen. So you should now see some slides. Good. All right. As Laura mentioned, I came to the fund fairly recently, about two and a half years ago from Washington DC, where I was running a global crowdfunding platform. But I have had a chance to sort of get my feet on the ground here and I love the work that the Jesse Baldi-Pont Fund does. So I'm excited to show it to you. Just briefly, I'll let you know what I'm going to cover. I'm going to cover a little bit of, you know, why we exist, why we do what we do. Going to talk about our work in Lavilla. I'm also going to work, talk about our work on the waterfront, our work in healthcare and our work in impact investing and Mark is going to take you through the Jesse. This is by no means all of what we do, but the things that we thought might be of interest to the council. So happy to answer any questions that are not on this agenda. So as Laura mentioned, here's our mission and why do we care about the communities that Jesse knew and loved? Well, partly it's the will. We are a product of Jesse's will and she said, I'd like my money to serve those communities. Simple. But you know, sort of digging a little further, Jesse Baldi-Pont was a, was a daughter of one of the sort of bluest families in, in this country. The Ball in Jesse Baldi-Pont is the same ball as in Mary Ball, Washington, George Washington's mother. So we're talking about George Washington's mother's family. The Ball family was in Virginia for an extremely long time. And she was, by the time she married Alfred I Dupont, obviously the Dupont family, she was a school teacher and had been a school teacher for a long time. At that time, she was, I think, a vice principal of a high school in, out in San Diego, California. And she was supporting her parents and some of her siblings through her earnings as a vice principal. But she had already started committing to the path of philanthropy. She, she thought education was the pathway to social and economic mobility. She funded lots of students to go to college and that sort of was the gateway drug for her to get into philanthropy. So we have a, as some of you may know, a specific list of grantees that Jesse used to give to in her lifetime. There are about 300 plus of them, but we also, per the terms of the will, serve the communities in Virginia, Delaware and Florida where we may provide temporary relief for people in need. So those are two different ways in which we do grant making, but really we seek to make those places that Jesse knew and loved as inclusive and prosperous as possible. We have an idea that when everyone in the community feels included and feels like they belong, they bring their whole selves to the table. And when people bring their whole selves to the table, that is when magic happens. That is when creativity happens. That was when entrepreneurial ideas are born. It's when they sort of give everything to what they're doing. And, you know, some of the problems we face in our world, our communities are so gnarly that you can't solve them unless you bring everything to the table. So we are trying to create the preconditions for each of these communities to prosper. So that translates for us into creating spaces where people come together in as inclusive and equitable way as possible. So that translates in this sort of philanthropic jargon into what we call place making and equity. And I'm going to talk about a couple of examples of that. Many of you are probably familiar and/or might seen, have seen some beautiful pictures in the paper or TV around our work together with the city on Lift Every Voice and Sing Park. This is located in the historic neighborhood of Lavilla. I'm going to start flipping through some renderings there. Created by Walter Hood, who is one of the premier urban landscape designers in the US, a MacArthur Genius Grant awardee, just an amazing person who came to Jacksonville. He was born in Charlotte, North Carolina, practices out of California now, but he's, you know, he's familiar with the Southeast. And he came to our, our city, looked at Lavilla and he knows the history. He, he had done his homework. So he knew the history of Lavilla, but he was, you know, struck by what little was left of it. And so some of the things that he's trying to do in this neighborhood is to recreate some of the built environment as testament to what an amazing place Lavilla used to be. You know, I, I'm new to Jacksonville, so I was just, you know, flabbergasted to learn that, you know, in its time Lavilla was the Harlem of the South. And, you know, realistically it should have been called, you know, Harlem should be known as the Jacksonville of the North because we from Jacksonville contributed some of the, you know, the outstanding talent that make up the, that make up what we know today as a Harlem Renaissance. And it's not restricted to just the Johnson Brothers, which is who are celebrated here in this beautiful park. But also Zora Neale Hurston, novelist, A. Philip Randolph, civic leader, Augusta Savage, the sculptress and many more. And they went up to Harlem because the train ended here. For a long time Jacksonville was the southernmost terminus of the Eastern Railroad. So some people showed up in Jacksonville by intention. Some people showed up because they got to the end of the line and they spilled out and ended up in Lavilla. And Lavilla was a neighborhood that you lived in if you were neither white nor Protestant. So Jewish people, the Chinese laborers who worked on the railroad, obviously the African American people. And the African American people lived there because in the Civil War, the Union Army had set up in Lavilla at Fort Hatch. They went from Fort Hatch over to the Battle of Alasty out west. And when the Civil War was over and African Americans were freed, they came back to Lavilla because that was where they had been bivouacked. And that's how you get the start of Lavilla. So Walter, just to get back to the park, wanted to celebrate that history. And what better way to do it than starting with Lift Every Voice and Sing? Here's the Emerald Trail over on the right hand side of the park. You will see here this lawn. I'm going to show you some more pictures. It's lifted in homage to the song Lift Every Voice and Sing. There is, here's the Emerald Trail again. There's a little statue of James Rosamond at the garden and at the piano. Here is a shotgun house that has been converted into a stage. If you know Lavilla, you know, DIA owns those three shotgun houses. One of them is going to be rehabilitated and turned into a stage. Here's what it looks like from the lifted lawn, little splash pad because summers are warm in Jacksonville and a poet's walk between the residential development that's going to be happening on the east side of the park. And here's a poet's walk from the other side. Now the subsequent pictures are pictures that some of you may not have seen. In fact, most of you may not have seen with the exception possibly of Wanda. But the Walter came to design Lift Every Voice and Sing, but he also came and said, you know what? You can't just have this park in the middle of nowhere. We got to activate the whole neighborhood. Here are some ideas. I mean, this is sort of over and above what we contracted for. And, you know, just to show you how much he was taken by Jacksonville, Walter donated $10,000 from one of his fellowships to the construction of this park. So he, he's got skin in the game. One of his ideas concerns the Ritz Theater. If you know, there's a little park in front of the Ritz Theater right now. It's cut off from the park with these concrete planters that frankly look like anti terrorist devices. Walter says, what do you need those planters for? Take them down, create an open space, recreate Augusta Savage's statue called The Harp. It was inspired by Lift Every Voice and Sing. Augusta Savage was a renowned sculptress. There was an amazing exhibit at the Comer about Augusta Savage. And if you went to the exhibit, you probably will know that The Harp was created for the World's Fair, but it was done in plaster. She did not have enough money to cast the statue in a more permanent way, like bronze. And at the end of the World's Fair, that plaster cast was raised they weren't going to bring it back, try and bring it back somewhere else. It's too impermanent. So we would like to recreate it and put it out in front of the Ritz. Just a little bit of a, you can see how this creates a sort of an outdoor space for the Ritz. Another thing that Walter left us with is the colored waiting room. Now you all are familiar with the convention center, old Union Station. The northernmost room of Union Station, this pink square was the colored waiting room. And you see here in this incredible picture here, this black and white picture, everyone dressed up in their, you know, sort of best traveling clothes. This is back when people dressed up to travel, waiting in the waiting room to take the train north. So in homage to that colored waiting room, he suggested, Walter suggested creating, recreating one of those benches, you know, that you see in every eastern railroad station, Philly, New York, Washington DC. These wooden benches, create a concrete version of that bench and put a timeline in front of it to show all the people who came and went and lived in Lavilla. This would be of course, a community project to figure out who we want to commemorate because we can't put everybody on there. But it would be a terrific way to sort of begin memorializing what an amazing engine that railroad station was for the creativity and vibrancy of Lavilla. As you know, it's right across the street from JTA and we've been talking to JTA about sort of integrating it with the art that is in JTA. They've done such a terrific job and maybe doing a vinyl wrap or digital projections on that part of Union Station. Moving on from the colored waiting room, we are going to look at some additional activation ideas. Some of you may know that Ward Street, now known as Houston Street, is, well, was the red light district of Jacksonville. Famously shut down in World War II because the Navy was not happy with what the sailors were getting up to on Ward Street. And, but because it was the red light district, I sort of, interesting fact is that it had the highest concentration of women, business and property owners in all of Jacksonville. Some of you may know that the author of The Red Badge Occurred, Stephen Crane and his wife Cora, I think, lived in Jacksonville for a time. When they lived in Jacksonville, Cora owned a brothel on Ward Street. A little known fact. So an idea is to commemorate the women of Lavilla, the business women, the artists, the, you know, people who came and worked in the cigar factories and create a little pop-up art installation so that people can learn about the women of Lavilla. This, you'll, most of you will recognize this beautiful mural at the back. There's an empty lot there where we could do a pop-up art exhibit just to begin to activate the space. Another idea is to start putting up art frames on Davis Street. That's Brewster Hospital. The first African American hospital in Jacksonville. Now the headquarters of the Florida Land Trust. And on Davis Street, you'll see of course Lavilla, the School of the Arts, where my son goes to school and at the far end, the Ritz Theater. So just to create a little bit of visual interest and excitement around Davis Street. And so that is our work in Lavilla and we are engaged in it both with funds. We are putting a million, 1.1 million dollars into the creation of the park and other activation activities. We are also actively fundraising for it with the city. So we are creating a public private partnership to really make sure that not only these beautiful places are built, but that they are maintained and that they are programmed so that people have a reason to show up. That's Lavilla and that's sort of equity and place making in just one place. Next, I want to talk a little bit about our engagement in Lift Jax. You've heard, I think, from Darnell Smith and one of your other meetings. But we are one of the funders for Lift Jax. We think it's an amazing partnership where funders are coming together, nonprofits are coming together, businesses are coming together. We are all focusing on one neighborhood, on the principles of purpose-built communities. And I just think that this type of approach, we're all agreed on how we're going to work and what we're going to try to do and just see if we can move the needle. And it's, it's an amazing, it's in a neighborhood that is got incredible history. A. Philip Randolph was, grew up there and others. But it's a community that has not had the, the support it needs to prosper. So Lift Jax is one of those signature activities that we are very proud to be associated with. Another thing you may have seen us gotten, getting involved in is in activating the waterfront. You've probably seen a lot, including yesterday, from all these plans around the waterfront. We, our particular engagement is to work in concert with stakeholders and the public sector to work and figure out what people want to do on this amazing stretch of river from Memorial Park to Metropolitan Park on the North Bank and encompassing the Baptist Health and the District on the South Bank. Our idea is that form follows function and we want to make sure that we have gotten the broadest possible definition of function. What do people want to do at the river? Whether it is walk, bike, hang out, fish, eat, drink? We want to gather all of these ideas and play this little game of Tetris to figure out how many of those things can be fit on the river. Because there's only so many, you know, so many feet of riverfront. Can we make sure that we fit as many of those things onto the river? So we're engaged, working to, working with groundwork and the coalition members of Riverfront Parks Now to try and figure out what do people want to do? And how can we advise the city on how all of those things can fit? We are not designing specific sites. You know, there's an RFP out for the Landing slash Riverfront Plaza. There will be an RFP out for, you know, the Berkman Plaza. There's all sorts of things that will specifically engineer and design. We are working with the city to advise them on what can be done with the public part of shipyards. But we are not in the business of sort of designing specific sites. So that's Riverfront work. The next thing is Jack's Care Connect. And what, and I want to talk about this a little bit because it's a unique way in which the free care clinics in Duval County for the uninsured residents the free care clinics in Duval County for the uninsured residents have been, you know, sort of working on their own, but recently come back together. And when they came back together, I mean, this, this sounds really sort of common sense, but this is not that common. So for all of these organizations to be working in concert, together with funding partners like us, to try to create the most comprehensive safety net that we can create for the uninsured. That is, you know, really innovative. And we wanted to make sure that we sort of rewarded people for coming together. And we are excited to see what can happen when people work together in concert rather than separately. Next, I'm going to talk briefly about our impact investing. Now, what does it mean to do impact investing? We have an endowment of uh, 360 million dollars or so. That endowment is designed to throw off enough income and gains for us to fund the administrative costs of running the fund as well as all the grants that I just, I was talking about. The IRS requires that we spend 5%. Some years we spend a lot more as in when we acquired the Jesse and it made all those investment. Sort of, it comes and goes, but at a minimum 5% is what we spend. But the 360 million, you know, invested in standard issue public uh, equity, invested in bonds, invested in private equity, invested a little bit in, you know, sort of venture capital. Some of that work, some of those assets, we are trying to make sure are actually also serving the social good. So about a third of our, that 360 million dollars is invested in what are called ESG uh, options as well as direct investments in some investments like um, Center Creek. It's a housing developer that focuses on moderate income housing in the Southeast. We have invested in uh, Sustain VC, a VC, a venture capital firm focused on environmentally and socially sustainable enterprises. In addition, we make what are called, this gets jargony. They're called program-related investments, but it, think of it really as low-interest loans that we can issue. One of these uh, loans that we made was for um, Changing Homelessness. Many of you know, there was a homelessness crisis in the middle of the pandemic. Just north of Beaver Street, you know, on the corner, Beaver and Jefferson, where uh, an entire encampment had set up. Um, the city had actually pulled together not just its own funds, but federal and state funds to take care of all those homeless people by housing them if necessary in hotel rooms. So there were funds ready to put these people up in hotel rooms. Changing Homelessness was in charge of that program. Now, you saw the number of people who were there. The number of hotel rooms that had to be booked to take care of those people was in the six figures. The way Changing Homelessness had to do that was by putting it on their Amex card. Because the hotels wanted a credit card to ensure that these bills would be paid. So their credit card was totally maxed out. They couldn't spend it on anything else. You know, they needed paper. They couldn't spend because their Amex card was maxed out. We made a $500,000 loan to Changing Homelessness so that they could free up their credit card, have enough working capital to just keep, you know, those hotel rooms booked while waiting for the federal or state funds that they were getting on a reimbursement basis. That's the kind of thing we can do with our capital that has nothing to do with our grant making. We also participated in a nationwide uh, guarantee pool to make sure that CDFIs make uh, uh, loans to businesses. And the guarantee pool makes it a little bit less risky for those CDFIs to make those uh, business loans. So that's our work on impact investing. But really, you know, the Jesse is one of our biggest impact investments. We, um, you know, my predecessor Sheri had this incredible insight that by buying the Hayden Burns Library and putting our stake in the ground downtown for, and creating beautiful office space for nonprofits. She could play a role in revitalizing that downtown. So I'm going to turn it over now to um, Mark, to talk about the Jesse.
Thanks Mari. So thank you, everybody, for being here today. Most of you have seen the Jesse. I hope most of you have had the chance to come through. If you haven't, or if you're interested, um, I'm making an offer now just so I don't forget. Um, if you want to, you know, work together and schedule a tour, including all this wonderful new public art in the gallery, I'd be happy to do that for you all. Just, you know, let us know. We'll schedule a time and we'll, we'll get that done. So first and foremost, as a um, employee of the fund and the director of the Jesse, my number one goal is to align this asset with our mission and make sure that we do the most good along the line of our mission. So equitable place making in nonprofit capacity building are, are really the focus areas there. At, at the Jesse, of course, equitable place making we'll get into in the next slides, as well as nonprofit capacity building. Um, but you know, those are, those are our primary focus areas here. And so what are some of the things that we've been doing during the last year? First, uh, Mari, you just had switched to, um, we ran a COVID-19 pop-up food pantry in partnership with Farm Share and Catholic Charities. Um, we served um, over 10,000 unique families between the months of uh, June and um, basically the week before Thanksgiving. Um, two days a week from essentially, well, the first, the first five weeks, we aligned with the city's um, own giving for COVID where they were they were giving out checks to folks that, you know, signed up. And so the idea was they could come over and get some food as well. And so five days a week, we were open until we ran out. We could serve 300 families a day. Um, and then after that money ran out, we stayed open two days a week and we could serve up to 400 families a day. Uh, those two days a week. And in addition, we ended up getting a grant from Uber where we could serve an additional 120 a week out of the Jesse. Um, where Uber drivers would come and bring that food to people that were homebound that couldn't um, you know, get to the Jesse, but, but needed food. So this was an incredible partnership. We are thinking um, together with our partners that include Catholic charities on ways that we could activate the Jesse to, at least monthly, to be sort of a full-service location for things like a food pantry, things like um, a mobile health clinic from St. Vincent Baptist or Soulsbacher. A place where people could come and, and ma- make the initial meet with places like Jala, places where, a place where people could pick up clothes for interviews. Um, sign up for other services that they might need. So kind of a full-service. So uh, one stop that we could do one day a month, but we're in the planning stages for that right now. So the next thing that you may have seen um, was something that we did in partnership with Art Republic last year. So this was actually a fascinating fact that came to me afterwards. One, I knew that we wanted to do this, right? We wanted to create a space outside of our building that made a public statement that you're welcome. Everyone belongs here. This, as many of you know, if you know the history of this building, it's always been a public space. Uh, it was a city hall before it was a library and now it's a nonprofit center. So we want to keep that idea alive. We don't want it to just be uh, an o- office building. We want it to be as asset to all of the community. And so art is an important part of that. I see art as multiple things. But one of the most important things is it does, is it breaks down the barriers for how you engage around certain issues. So if, if you're talking about difficult topics and you're just doing a, a panel, the, the folks that agree with your panel will show up and no one else will be there. But if you do an art exhibit around a difficult topic, you may bring more people in and be able to lower guard enough that people will start to engage in the conversation. And then maybe you can bring, bring them along. But um, for me, equitable representation mattered. Uh, many of you know Earl Johnson, who's leading Take Them Down Jax, as well as a Take Them Down movement across the country with monuments. Taking things down that divide people is one thing, but there's not enough art in the public space that's representative of everyone's story. And so that was our goal here. How do we take this public space that we have and make it where we can represent the most perspectives of stories in, in Jacksonville? That aren't your traditional stories. Lift up um, communities of color, lift up women, um, and, and folks that are traditionally left out. The interesting fact that we learned along this pathway was that in all of Jacksonville, remember that's 864 square miles. It's huge. In permanent public art, there were only two pieces that represented minorities and both are statues of African-American sports stars. So the mosaics in particular are considered permanent public art um, versus things like um, you know, the vinyl that we did and, and the, and the murals, because they can be painted over or taken down. But we've more than quadrupled representation and amongst cultural, civil rights, educational and philanthropic leaders locally here. Um, a couple of other interesting facts, uh, in case you don't make the tour that you, you know, we're putting up the plaques now, but these kind of things wouldn't be in the plaques, but they're pretty interesting facts about, about um, the art and the, and how much attention to detail we, we paid to it. So if you, if you look, it's, there's two women in the, in the um, round bays on each end and two men in the middle. And that was very intentional. The idea was that women are exceptionally underrepresented in public art, but also women hold, hold men up as they're doing these things. There's always strong, powerful women behind these great men that we don't always acknowledge. So it was a very particular um, reason that we kind of set up that flow on that history walk there. And a second interesting fact, um, on the corner of Ocean and Forsyth, um, is where Eartha M.M. White sits. And m- most people don't know that the, where the West Bay Garage is that the city owns was a um, slave market. Um, and that was where um, Eartha's um, great-grandparents were sold um, um, into slavery. So now Eartha looks out onto that space. You know, as a woman that persevered and came, came against, came up against so many things to be, you know, one of the greatest Jacksonville philanthropists and leaders. Uh, the parking garage is the West Bay. It's at, um, it's between Forsyth and Bay Street on Ocean. So. So that's a little bit about our Art Republic partnership. Jessica was incredible. The artists were incredible. Um, you'll, if you come by, you may notice that the fins are down right now. There was some problems with installation. We're working with another incredible local vendor who you may know, Steve Williams and Harbinger Signs to rectify that issue and actually make them so that we can switch those out on a regular basis. So although they're down right now, they will be back soon. We're just working on the plan for that. So before end of year is my plan. So um, stay tuned, but they will be back. And one of our newest uh, additions to the Jesse is a partnership with Jacksonville Cultural Development Corporation and Shawana Brooks, their new um, ED, um, known as the Corner Gallery. And this is a really interesting and fun project. We launched it as a pilot, um, and this is still in the pilot stage, but we've now fully funded it over the next year. And it's focused on artist residencies. So essentially, there'll be four separate residencies and they're six months long. Um, the first three months, the artist works around a specific community issue. So let's use an example like um, environmental inequities and certain zip codes and neighborhoods. So they'll work with nonprofits uh, that are dealing with that issue locally, residents. Though for the first three months, they'll be learning about those issues in depth. And then they'll create um, artwork in response to that. And for the next three months, that art will be inside the Corner Gallery. So every three months, that exhibit will change with a new artist. All the artists are going to be um, um, Black Indigenous People Color artists. Um, telling local stor- all local, all telling um, stories about local issues. And then during that three months that, that is up, there'll be associated programming from panels to performances uh, and, and things that, that are happening. So again, one of the things that's happening during this pilot, um, for Juneteenth, actually Friday, since there's so many things happening for Juneteenth. If you want to come by between five and nine, we're going to have a, an event. There'll be some performers out on the patio there and the gallery will be open from five to nine. So, so this space is now activated and acting as an anchor here on the corner to um, activate this space. And we're actively talking to the Grangers who own the fire station across the street and Elias who owns the building across the street about how we can continue to work together and, and activate these spaces. And so big other message here is paying artists. Um, we pay artists very well inside of, um, that, that are participating in this, including the performing artists. Um, as you know, after restaurants, artists were probably the people that were hardest hit by COVID. And so their cultural people doing cultural work is such an important part of revitalizing downtowns and revitalizing cities. We have to honor those artists. We have to pay them. Artists get asked to do work for free all the time and we feel like we need to honor that. So we are trying to do that as an example with the Corner Gallery and every work that we did around the building as well. And lastly, um, but no less important is the capacity building work that we do. Um, and these are just a few of the examples. So one of our newest programs is called The Friends of the Jesse. So right now, um, as of Ju- July 1st, actually, because we have some happening, we'll have tw- we're fully leased. We'll have 22 Jacksonville-based nonprofit organizations that are in the building. Um, and we offer regular programming for them, the community at large. But we wanted to figure out, how could we impact smaller grassroots nonprofits and, and diversify the space, create more density, create more opportunities for them to access the resource? So we developed a program called Friends of the Jesse. And so it's a super low free fee of $99, which actually all of that $99 can be used for um, below well below market rate um, meeting room rentals. They can co-work in our space. We redesigned all of our furniture and our common areas for co-working between seven and seven, 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, Monday to Friday. Um, it gives them the opportunity to, you know, rub shoulders with more established nonprofits, create opportunities for collaboration. Give them places to meet with donors and, and their constituents that, you know, they want to meet with them and, and you know, have access to state-of-the-art meeting space and other um, things we have in our facility, like a full production studio, all at a very large discount. Um, we are running an advocacy series um, for nonprofits with the Nonprofit Center in Northeast Florida. Uh, we're very excited about this, um, this programming. It started at the beginning of this year. I tend to partner with the Nonprofit Center in Northeast Florida around um, our capacity building work because they bring such um, great knowledge, um, and you know, such an important part of our community. And Sabine's organization is also assisting um, with that advocacy series. And moving the margins um, was really the impetus for the ongoing artwork. We spent the first quarter of this year doing community issue forums that were really popular around a variety of issues, including policy to protest um, with, which focused very heavily on the people's budget, which some of you may or may not know about, but is a pretty interesting document created, created to think differently about Jacksonville's budget. And um, we've done something on race and education and um, in response to the school name issue that included many students that participated. Um, and we did something on philanthropy and um, women um, and throughout history. And we did something on philanthropy and women and throughout history and their participation. So again, we're trying to do things that will help build the capacity of nonprofits that aren't just tenants, but across the Northeast Florida region.
I have to say, like, I'm taking notes, y'all. Those who are on council with us on Fridays, now that I take a lot of notes during meetings, and Gracie does also, we have like a live document where we write a bunch of stuff down. I'm also taking side notes because, in a very, very positive way, I'm so overwhelmed. It's amazing. And like, if you're watching the chat box at all, for those of you that are, it's amazing how much additional information people are giving, kind of to everything that you're speaking to, which is really nice to see that there's a lot of people downtown that know a lot about, you know, the different programs that you're doing and those sorts of things. And it's just, I don't know, this is really, this is amazing. Anyway, all that to be said, I'm going to go with some questions because there are a lot of questions. Some of them kind of are to the state of what's going on right now in Jacksonville, which is good, right? And then some of them are very positive and like, how can we help kind of question? So I'm just going to kind of start asking, and then we'll go from there. Mari, Mark, whichever one of y'all, or both y'all that want to answer, feel free to go. It's, it's kind of, this is kind of the fun part. And like I had said, you know, we probably might, I mean, we're at 8:52. We might go a little bit past pushing into the breakouts. But at some point, we probably will have to, Mark and Mari, I'll probably have to send you a note. And Mari, too, that I want to thank you, I know you're going out of town, so I appreciate you so much for joining us this morning. And so whenever we have extra questions, you can answer them when you get back. Okay, all that to be said, and this one is from Robert. He said, "Thank you so much for the support of Jack's River Jams. So out of the box and so much fun. What's next? Like, would y'all have any sort of, I mean, I can answer the question about the Jack's River Jam stuff, but as far as like that kind of music activation, those sorts of events that brought people into downtown that haven't been downtown in over a year, or maybe even at all? You know, do y'all have any plans for anything moving forward?
Yeah, so obviously Jake wants to repeat the magic, and, you know, we're, we're working with him to see what can be done.
Are you drinking the Kool-Aid, Mari?
Yes, drank the Kool-Aid a long time ago. Jake's very persuasive. And, and, you know, we have other events like Jazz Fest and, you know, all these other things that we want to see what we can do to support. We also want to activate in, you know, smaller, less elaborate ways. You know, even, you know, I, the Douglas Anderson Orchestra had something at Memorial Park because they couldn't do it in their auditorium. Well, what an amazing way to activate Memorial Park, which is incredibly well-activated anyway, but why not do some of those things downtown, right? Make it easy for the cultural content producers in town to do these little pop-up things. I mean, if you were walking along the Riverwalk and heard the DA Orchestra playing, you'd be just like entranced.
Happy, yeah.
Let's do that kind of thing.
And just to piggyback off of that, of course, I mentioned that, you know, we're going to have performances at the Jesse. When Art Walk is back, we, we've worked with Jake. We shut down our street now with the police so that we can extend Art Walk down further. It used to go further, as you know, and it kind of died. So we're trying to bring that back for the elbow, and we, we go out, you know, like, we bring in performers. Again, we pay every performer, you know, that they're asking. And, and I, quite frankly, Mari knows this, this is a little bit, you know, I, I have an idea for a signature event that the Jesse would do. You know, that's, you know, extension of, similar to what the Aspen Ideas Festival is. And there's a lot of ways that that can go. COVID, of course, slowed that down, but we're not off, off of that. I'm not off of that because we, there is a way we can use our building and activate that. And we have a lot of good partners like Sabine that could be integral to that and, and thinking about how we connect multiple things. Because that's one of the things I talk with Jake about a lot, is how do we connect different events so that we can create a flow, you know? So instead of trying to do something that's not sustainable, like we saw with One Spark, if a lot of people are doing really cool things that have connections, can we create that same vibe, but in a sustainable way?
Oh, I look forward to that, and once you announce that, we'll have you back on. Really exciting. You know, because ultimately, to your point, I mean, one of the things about downtown especially, and we're going to kind of get into all of this with all of the, you know, we keep calling it like the crane watch, right? Like, there's actually things that are going to be happening, things that are approved, things that are going to happen, they aren't just a rendering. They are in, you know, they are moving forward right now. I think it's going to be really interesting as we bring in, you know, more people living downtown, more restaurants downtown, more spaces, you know? How do we, how do we keep people like migrating and moving through all of that without the dead zones? And where y'all are situated, literally right there with the elbow, kind of connect, y'all are like that pivotal in-between spot that connects, you know, a, a very highly activated space to another highly activated space. Y'all are like that perfect space right in between, and it's great because y'all have an amazing facility. You know, it, where, like, the front of your building, you know, you can shut down the street and doesn't impact all of downtown traffic, which is really nice as well. Like, you are very, you're centered in a very desirable location, and, you know, in my opinion, at least for what it matters, to really be able to actually, you know, do that and it be successful, to your point. So that's exciting. Okay, let's move on because I'm not, we're going to run out of time. Does the Fund Invest in Renewable, this is from JD, does the Fund invest in renewable energy for low-cost housing?
Currently, I don't think we actively invest in those, in renewable energy for low-cost housing. We are, through Sustain VC, engaged in a couple of solar activities, but they're not designed, you know, specifically for, for low-cost housing. It's an interesting idea. We have an impact investing group that comprises, you know, sort of institutions and high net worth individuals in the area where we look at deals. Most recently, we looked at a composting deal. We also looked at HVC as a service. So all of these things would be up for grabs. Would love to find out more if you have specific things in mind.
Perfect. And to that, we'll share information. I mean, the, the nice thing I like about y'all also is that y'all's information's online. Like, it's not like you hide, like, anyone can get ahold of you, which is really nice. You're very accessible. So JD, if you want to, you can find information, you can get their email addresses online, and you can.
Yeah, and if people have interest in joining the Neat Flex series that happens, Chris would definitely welcome participation from the Chamber of Folks as well.
Yeah.
And as, as mentioned, it's, you know, larger anchor institutions are members and large donors. But, you know, if you want to learn more about impact investing, it's a great place to get together with your locals, folks.
Okay, so we get this question a lot, like, at some iteration of this question a lot, especially when we have speakers who are making change in downtown. So this is from Nicole, and it's a great question. And we talk about, Gracie talks about, this is always a safe space, and you guys talk about, you know, it's a safe space. So we want you to be very honest in this response. How do you balance revitalizing and uplifting the East Side and Lavilla without whitewashing the integrity of the community?
Yeah, and that's something we were very cognizant of, and it, it comes actually with our history, right? So I told you that Jesse was a remarkable woman in some ways, but she was also an avowed segregationist. She believed in separate but equal. She funded a whole bunch of independent schools to be founded in the 1960s, which, you know, the timing of that is basically Brown versus Board of Education, right? She, in fact, you know, one of the, the most troubling investments that, and philanthropic investments that Jesse made was in Prince Edward County in Virginia, which that county chose to shut down all public schools rather than integrate them. So African-American kids in that county could not go to school for a number of years because there were no public schools to go to. And she founded an independent school that admitted only whites. You know, we are working at this point with that school to repair. It, it's our form of reparations to provide scholarships to the African-American descendants of those families who could not attend school in that, in that. So it's something we really feel a, a special responsibility to when it comes to, you know, aspiring to what Ennis calls "withentrification" rather than gentrification.
We love Ennis, yes.
You know, we work with Carol Alexander on the, on our plans with, is, in Lavilla. Some of you may know her as the founding director of the Ritz Theater. She cared deeply about Lavilla and its history and its, its people. And we're trying, you know, we're hoping that she will keep us honest. And in the case of Lift Jaxx, I think we are, Lift Jaxx is, I mean, historically, Suzanne Pickett, CDC is core to that, to that work. And again, we're hoping people like Suzanne and Tia will keep us honest in terms of benefiting the people who either currently live there or used to live there, and were sort of chased out by urban renewal, and make sure that it benefits them. So, you know, to the extent that any of the work that is being done in Lavilla can provide employment and provide, you know, activities for the kids whose parents and grandparents used to live in Lavilla, we want to make sure we do that. It's hard, and I'm not sure we're going to get it right all the time, but we are aware of it.
Well, I think being aware is kind of the first step, right? And then to your point, you, you feel that you have some, some ones, more than one person, but someone, you know, who can hold you accountable. And clearly, I mean, this group is all about holding people accountable. And so like, it's, it's just kind of, you know, that's why I said it's a question we're getting a lot these days. Because as, as the city moves forward and as there's progress and as there's change, you know, making sure that we aren't dismissive or displacing anyone is, you know, it's, it's a huge concern for those of us, you know, who, you know, when we have our, our late-night chats and things like that, it is a huge concern. Like, we're all, I mean, we all want all the positive change, and we want the growth, and we need the growth, and it's what's going to sustain the city. But how do we do that in a way that's not taking away the heart and the core of the city? So that's, the fact that you are just aware of it, I think, is, is, is a great response and, and hope that, you know, that the programs will be, will be positive moving forward. Let's see, you mentioned involvement with Lift Every Voice Park. Is the DuPont Fund involved with the Emerald Trail? We also love the Emerald Trail.
We love the Emerald Trail, too. We, again, because of the structure of our will, we can only fund certain organizations and not others. But nonetheless, we, so in groundwork, Jacksonville didn't exist when Mrs. DuPont was around. And the Emerald Trail is, is not very temporary, right? It's not temporary really for people in need. But we are funding activities adjacent to the ground, to ground, the Emerald Trail, as in, we funded, we gave a fairly large grant to UF recently to do both stakeholder and assessment work around Hogan and McCoy's Creeks. And they are, that work is central to making sure that the Emerald Trail is appropriately set up in those very sensitive ecosystems to make sure that we increase resilience rather than reduce resilience through the creation of the Emerald Trail.
Right. Well, I think that, you know, to that also, we go back to staying as involved as possible is going to be intricate because what we don't want for downtown is a bunch of silos, right? So where, where you can't necessarily get specifically to the Emerald Trail, you're still going to be a part of it, and vice versa. I think that that's huge. Let's go ahead. We, so I just, you know, like I said, we're always on a, we're always in a live, in a Google Doc. And so Gracie and I are chatting about, we're talking about, we're going to skip breakouts and just run with the Q and A. I'm, I'm sure everyone is fine with that because this is very interesting. We've got a couple more questions that we really want to go to. So guys, we're going to, clearly at nine o'clock, some of you have to jump off. If you have to jump off, we understand. But we're going to go ahead and keep rolling with the Q and A through because some of these are really important. Okay, so let's see, the next one. Oh, this is a question from Robert, and I can answer. But the Juneteenth event that y'all have scheduled, it's in two Fridays, right, on the 18th? And, and what time does that start? Can you just give a little bit more detail about it?
Yeah.
Free, do we just show up?
Yep, it's free, you just show up. Everything we do is going to be free, you know, really, because it's all about, you know, building community. So I can pretty much guarantee that. So five to nine, so it'll start at five. There'll be performers out on the patio, the gallery will be open. Some conversation things will happen inside the gallery, I'm sure, because Shawana just is, you know, a master of that.
Okay, so five to nine, and it's in two Fridays from now. So our next council meeting, guys, that night, that will be, that will be the night. We have a question. In, is the Riverside area near Paper and YMCA part of downtown? Area near Paper, JD, I'm not quite sure, that's what it is. Riverside area near Paper and YMCA part of downtown?
Oh, I see. Are you asking whether we include the YMCA and the Florida Times-Union building? Part of the riverfront, yes. Yes, it is, because Memorial Park is beyond the, the comer and the Garden Club. And you follow that, of course, the Riverwalk doesn't exist there yet. But, you know, from the Riverside Arch Market all the way to Metropolitan Park, but really, all the way to Memorial Park. That is part of that strip that we are trying to figure out, you know? How do people use it? How would people like to use it, and how can we design it for maximum use?
Well, so with that, as we talk about, like, you know, there's this, earlier this week, you know, Steve Atkins announced that he's got a plan, he wants an RP to go out, those sorts of things. And it kind of took some, and I say some, quite a few people by surprise. Were y'all part of any of those talks? Did you know anything about it? Are, because, I mean, y'all are really involved with the riverfront, you know, activation, like, that's important to you guys. So is that something that you now are going to kind of get involved with?
We, we are trying to make sure that we, we leverage all the work that has been done. And, you know, this might not be as well-known, but AIA, the American Institute of Architects, Dave Engdahl houses, you know, vision for the waterfront. There's a little video and everything. It's, I think that's all available online. So that work's been going on. Obviously, the work that Steve has been doing has been, you know, in play. I, I got a view of it, you know, several months ago. That's, you know, the, the Jags did a big thing yesterday with additional renderings of what they plan to do at the Shipyards. So what we're really trying to do is use them as core ingredients for what is going to happen, consistent with what makes sense. How can we make sure that it makes sense for the broadest segment of the public as we can possibly make it?
Nice. Well, and I think that that, you know, it's one of those things, right? We talk about the hot topics and the things that matter. And ultimately, there needs to be people, like, we just talked a minute ago, like, you are, you make sure that you have someone that kind of keeps you in check. In our minds, I feel like you're kind of like the one that's going to help keep those things in check, right? And remind us, like, I don't know, that's necessarily, like, so great for this person, or this group, or these, you know what I mean? Like, this area. So I think it's kind of nice to hear you be like, yep, we're going to make sure it's all consistent. And like, has a true, we go back to that silo, no silos, right? Like, we all need.
Yeah. And, you know, we, we can fund work, we can fund outreach. We do need to rely on, on you all, too, to, because the city can or cannot listen to us, right? I mean, it, it's entirely voluntary. We just want to have the conversation and to have as many of you be aware of that conversation so that you can, you can speak up and be part of that voice.
Well, so to that, do you have, like, this is actually from Gracie. Like, do you, this is kind of a two thing, right? We're going to talk about, you just, she said she learned so much about the history of Jacksonville, right? And then there's the stuff for the future. So like, recommendations, is there a way we can educate ourselves? Whether it's books on history on Jacksonville, it's like, because we can't know where we're going without knowing where we've been, right? That's always a big thing. So like, are there things that you recommend? Are there speaker series? Are there events? Are there, like, what can we do to get more? Like, how do we learn more? How do we get more?
Yeah, and so I'll, I'll rattle off a bunch of resources, but I can also give them to Gracie so she can send them out later. But the Jackson Magazine, of course, does an incredible job of covering things, both long feature historical stuff, as well as, you know, they were online, you know, like, within hours after the Jags with all the slides online. You can see them right there in the Jackson Magazine, so an incredible resource. We, in concert, together with Ennis on the Jackson Magazine, have a webinar series. Funny you should ask, how can you learn more about the history of Jacksonville? We have a webinar series on the history of Jacksonville. We have done the Jewish history of Jacksonville. We have done Women of Lavilla. We have done the culinary history of Jacksonville, which was not one to do on an empty stomach. We're going to be having a musical history of Jacksonville coming up. We have, all those three that I just talked about have been recorded. I can send you the links. I can also send you the links for signing up for future, if you're interested in the musical history of Jacksonville. It's incredibly rich. It's incredibly rich. The first recording of the blues happened in the Clara White Mission Building in the United States. You know, you think it's New Orleans, you think it's some other place other than Jacksonville, but no, the first recording of the blues happened in Jacksonville. So, it's got this amazing history that we can tap into. Obviously, Lynyrd Skynyrd, Allman Brothers. But they drew on this incredible history, you know? John Betch, world-renowned jazz musician. John Betch is A.L. Lewis's great-grandson, sister of Genetical, I mean, brother of Genetical and of Maveen Betch. You know, three incredibly well-renowned siblings, great-grandchildren of Abraham Lincoln Lewis, one of the first millionaires, African-American millionaires, head of the Afro-American Insurance Agency, and one of the founders of American Beach. Which brings me to another great book about Jacksonville history. Even though it's about American Beach, it's actually also about the history of African-American families in Jacksonville. Russ Reimer's American Beach. It's an incredible book that talks about that history. What else, Mark?
Well, I mean, if, if you can hang out with Enes anytime, you're just going to get a load of information, right? You know, he does an incredible amount of walking and biking tours, you know? And he is just an absolute gem of, of history here. And so, anytime you can get up close and personal with him, you know? And honestly, Alan's on the line here. Many of you may know that they're working on the plans for the commemoration of our bicentennial. So, that's going to be, you know, a real deep look into Jacksonville's history, you know, for 200 years and into the future. And so, you know, I think Jacksonville Historical Society is going to be uncovering and sharing a lot of things that we haven't talked about before locally. And of course, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, Jim Crooks, his book on consolidation is incredible, you know? And some of those, you know, complications around consolidation, like historically, you know, African-Americans have been shut out of Jacksonville in two periods in history where they held power, first in the early 1900s, when the state basically took over control of the city and rebuilt all of the government, which at that point had included African-American leadership. And consolidation, which had a promise of improved neighborhoods and infrastructures, which still remain unfulfilled, although are written, and consolidated African-American power in the city to a much smaller degree and has had impacts long-term on those neighborhoods and our city. And so, you know, I think there's a, there's a lot of interesting work out there and a lot of stuff that's going to come out through the next year or so with the bicentennial.
Which is great. And of course, I'm sure we'll be trying very hard to get as much of that information out also. Like, then we're going to be like, okay, we're putting this out there. To that, we're at 9:14, so we are pretty much done. With that, real quickly, though, I want to make sure, to reiterate that Jesse has, Jesse has a friends program. We can be friends of the Jesse, and we all should be friends of the Jesse. $99 is not, you know, it's, it's, it's not an impossible, unattainable fee. So, I just, I, you know, when we talk about how can we get involved, clearly, providing money for you guys clearly helps always, right? But then also, on our side, you know, we definitely want to be involved in what's going on. So, Mark, Mari, as, you know, as things are announced, I would love, and Mark, you can shoot me a text, and I'll get it out to everyone. I think it would be great for us to be able to promote you guys and what you're doing so, as much as possible, because we want to be involved. It's kind of a secret, but I'm going to, I mean, it's a secret. I'm going to let you know. We're moving the paw prints all the way down to the BiStar building. So, the paw prints will be right near y'all as well. So, I would love for, in December, when we start doing the paw prints again, I'd love if you guys got involved with that. Please, it would be wonderful to bring you guys in on that as well. All that to be said, I'm going to give it to Gracie to say goodbye. And Mari, Mark, thank you guys so much. I feel like we could talk for another hour. I really appreciate everything that y'all are doing for the city and for us and for coming on on short notice and for coming in general. This, thank you guys so much. Okay, Gracie.
Yes. Thank you so much. I learned a lot, and I thought I knew a lot already. So, I'm thrilled to continue to push out the programming that you both are working on, that Enes has been working on. He's no stranger to downtown. He helped with our walking tour in April. And then in addition, what Alan's working on at the Jacksonville Historical Society. So, please feel free to send us that information and we'll send out to this group. I just want to give a huge thank you to Laura for organizing, Mari and Mark for being here. I hope everyone on the call enjoyed learning more of our incredible city and also ways that we can come together and celebrate our history. And so, our next meeting will be Friday, June 18th. It will be via Zoom. We are still finalizing speaker information, so that will be out shortly. But thank you again for joining us, and I hope you have a wonderful weekend.